All right, at this time I'd like to call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order and call up on Commissioner Mike Mesmore to lead us in the invocation.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, Amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I want to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. We have a first item on the agenda is the proclamation proclaiming the month of February 2019 as Black History Month. And we're also going to be able to present a special recognition tonight, so I'd like to invite Dr. Delorena Nance Davis. Join me up here, anybody else, or family members, or others that are here, somebody to come on up and first present the proclamation and then make a special presentation. So, tonight, we issue this proclamation from the city of Harlingen, and the reason follows: Whereas African-American history is a very large part of American history, since 1976, February has been designated as Black History Month, for which memorable events should be recognized and celebrated. And whereas Black History Month affords a special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage and to honor the many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights and the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate barriers of equality before minority groups. Now therefore, I, Chris Foswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the month of February 2019 as Black History Month in Harlingen, Texas. I encourage all Harlingen residents, residents of Cameron County, to unite in celebrating Black History Month. Present this to you, if you don't mind, serving as the series recipient, and also make a special recognition. Earlier this month, there were -- Congressman Philip Von Vella read into the official congressional record a very wonderful recognition for Dr. Delorena Nance Davis. And I wanted to read what had been read into the congressional record. It's a lot of spitting that we recognize her here locally as well, since she is a citizen of Harlingen. Dr. Nance Davis received her Bachelor of Arts in Mathematics and German from Texas Lutheran University, shared both a Bachelor of Science and Accounting, and a Master of Education in Secondary and Higher Education from Texas A&amp;M, Texas A&amp;M. She capped off her academic career at the University of Houston, graduating with a Doctor of Education and Supervision and Administration, and an emphasis in Mathematics. During her 43-year career as an educator, Dr. Nance Davis dedicated 34 of those years to the Rio Grande Valley community. She began as an instructor at Texas State Technical College in Harlingen before teaching at the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. While there as a professor, she was Chair of the Mathematics Department for 10 years, beginning at Math and Science Academy, and served as an Assistant to the Dean of Technology and General Training. And as a leader and mentor inside and outside of the classroom, she has made an immeasurable impact on the lives and the career of her students. She was the Chair of the Mathematics Department, UTRGV, she led the nation for several years in graduating more mathematics with degrees in mathematics than any other university in the United States. She's also been involved in developing programs in the valley to raise awareness in the community. Since retiring in 2013 from UTRGV, Dr. Nance Davis continues to be a mentor and tutor for many students in the community. She proudly serves the Harlingen community by teaching mathematics at the Student Learning Center, participating on multiple city boards, leading our Community Improvement Board, and leading youth activities at the Missionary Baptist Church as its director. So we want to present a special recognition of our official coin, the city of Harlingen, to you, as a small token of thanks for all that you have done for our community, and we really think you're a wonderful representative in this recognition this year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Well, my family has always been about service, and so I did it for my mom, who is a strong leader in her community, and she's always helped everyone in any way that she can. And so when I tutor kids and see how well they succeed, it's a wonderful thing. I've had children who come in failing math, and now they're in pre-AP math. They went from failing to succeeding and making these great aims. My thing is to give them a love of math, and I usually do. I have some that come to my center. I own a center. They come to my center on Saturdays, the lullins, and they stay for two hours, and they do that, and they enjoy it every Saturday.
Item two is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 5, 2018, and the regular meeting of December 19, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Next items are 3A through D, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item four, consideration of possible action to approve the bid received on the following property struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions for my tax resale conducted on November 6, 2018, legal description of the South One, half of Lot 17 Colonial Guadalupe, subdivision number two, in addition to Cameron County, Texas, as described in volume 1327, page 469, official records of Cameron County, Texas. Mr. Givada, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission, members of the community. Pleasure to be here. The good news is we only have one property for you to consider, and that's a good thing. That means that all the other properties that may have been put up for sale for Harlingen sold, and the city got all the money that they were owed on those sales. So we're bringing this one to you. This was conducted at the beginning of November. It's actually the third time that we've put this property up for sale. The previous two times, there were no bids. We did get a bid, and you're getting about 22, 23 cents on the dollar on this one, but it gets it back on the roll. The judgment amount owed to the city was $910. After court costs and advertising costs of sale, the amount that the city would get is $205 on this one property. The property has been delinquent for a number of years, and so we recommend that -- I'm sorry, it goes back to 2006. So we've been trying to sell it, you know, for quite a bit of time. So we finally got a bidder. The good news is it gets back on the tax roll, gets reappraised, and you've got somebody that is paying taxes on it and income to the city. Any questions?
All right, is there a motion to approve the bid?
Some move.
Second.
All those in -- any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. So item five is consideration of possible action to approve a resolution accepting the bid received on a tax resale conducted on November 6 for the above referenced property. Okay. It's to approve a resolution, so we just need a resolution in addition to acceptance of the bid. Same issue, so is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item six is consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to submit a grant application in the amount of $83,537.20 to the Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office, Criminal Justice Division, General Victim Assistance Program to secure funds for a crime victim liaison.
Mayor, commissioners, this grant is a two-year grant for a crime victims liaison. It's a position we've had in the department for about 12 years now, that we've had Ms. Bee Garcia working for us. And her grant is paid, it's an 80/20 match, so 80% paid by the state, 20% paid by us through salaries and in-kind, as far as office space and et cetera, supplies, those types of things. And like I said, Bee's been with us for about 12 years, and she does a fantastic job. She's helped about 2,700 victims over the last three years. And this starts fiscal year 2019, 2020, and then the subsequent following year.
All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution for the grant application?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item seven is consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to submit a grant application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, for $29,724.60 under the Rifle Resistant Body Armor Grant Program. Chief.
Mayor, commissioners, this is for additional body armor above what they already wear. This is for rifle-resistant body armor, particularly in -- we're just asking for the application to be submitted on this one. We'd be looking at about 60 for the patrol officers on this one.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Some move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item eight is the consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to submit a grant application to the Office of Governor, Homeland Security Grants Division, for $31,122 under the 2019 State Homeland Security Program. Chief.
Mayor, commissioners, this one's an annual grant that comes around, it's usually around the $30,000 mark, and usually for technology. And this one, we're going to ask for some portable radios to start upgrading our radio system. These would be specifically for the SWAT team, since this grant is tied into response, emergency response teams, so.
Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to accept a grant funding in the amount of $27,830 made available through the Office of the Governor, Department of Justice, under the 2018-19 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Program.
Mayor, commissioners, this is a grant that was just awarded a couple weeks ago, and we just wanted to get the approval to move forward with and accept the grant. This will be for technology and replacing computers.
Okay, that's even better, get them before we pass the resolution.
This resolution was passed last year.
I like it, don't leave anything on the table, Chief. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. All right, thank you, Chief, we appreciate all your department does to seek out this funding to help keep our city safe.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, public hearing to receive comments regarding the proposed voluntary annexation and to establish the initial zoning to residential, single-family R1 district for 36.46 acre tract of land, more or less, out of Block 99, Wilson Track subdivision, located on north of Pink Flamingo Road, east of Tram Lane.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. Thank you. Mr. Davis Alinas, the applicant on behalf of Arturo Ortega, who is the property owner, has requested a voluntary, excuse me, annexation of 36.46 acre tract of land. The subject property is currently outside, but adjacent to our current city limits. The line in red is our city limits right now. Subject property is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into a 160 lot, single-family residential subdivision to be done in four phases. The developer will be responsible for all infrastructure provisions, including street development, street lights, water and wastewater services, stormwater and other requirements as specified under the subdivision regulations. Water and wastewater disposal will be provided by our Harlingen Water Works, and the subject annexation will require three public hearings and two readings of the ORDs to be annexed to the property. The subdivision is currently in preliminary stages right now through our engineering department. They have requested additional information, and an impact traffic study is really the one that we're waiting for. We have not been provided with that yet, but we're still at the preliminary stages. The owner is aware that that has not been submitted yet, he's working with his engineer, and so some of the design may or may not change at this time. But right now, he is only requesting the 36 acres to be annexed into the city. I can answer any questions.
And that's the Pelican Landing subdivision?
Well, it's -- Pelican's reach is what the proposed name they're having.
It's adjacent to Pelican.
Right, would be right.
Landing, so that subdivision's practically sold out, or?
There are some houses there that's not sold out yet. I think we counted, at last count, was 70, but there's a lot of 160 lots we have to investigate.
All right, this is a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing. If someone would like to comment regarding the proposed voluntary annexation. Is there anyone who would like to comment regarding the proposed voluntary annexation?
I have a comment.
Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, and that'll satisfy that requirement for the first public hearing.
That's correct.
Rodrigo.
Yes, sir.
I brought this up last time, because this is the second subdivision in this area that we've just recently approved, correct? We had another one that was off of Wilson Road.
The one of Wilson Road was a smaller subdivision, yes, sir.
I just would like to be sure that the drainage district in that area is aware of what's going on there, and can assure you that they think that there's adequate drainage there, because there have been lots of problems out there in the past.
Absolutely.
We're adding lots of houses, so.
We are in communication with them, with Harlingen Water Works, as I said, and we're waiting for the impact study. We also reached out to Primera, the city of Primera, because it is adjacent to their city limits, and we want to make sure that they're aware of what's going on, and if they have any input to provide us, input they have. They have not responded to our correspondence. But like, right now, we're still at the preliminary stage, so there's still more information to be gathered.
I think this is the same one. We're in that, you know, how they keep coming back over and over?
Right.
Because the property you're talking about is to the east of that, where they had the problems.
Right.
Well, don't we have a drainage master plan that would have information regarding this area?
Right, they have already provided a drainage plan to the engineering department, and the engineering department reviewed it, and thus far has agreed with it, but they're still pending initial information before they continue with the preliminary.
That's one of the things that we did the plan for, is to allow developers to look at what's already been assessed and help them with their planning process, and also us.
We haven't informed the developer of the need for a second means of egress?
Yes.
So they are aware.
Of the possible means, again, we're waiting the impact, the impact traffic analysis, and that's what's going to determine more. But they are aware.
Okay. Let's go on, then, to the next item, which is number 11, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from single-family residential R1 district to general retail GR district for lots 11 through 13, block 2, and lots 12 and 13, block 3, RW Nelson amended subdivision located at 703 and 706 West. Hanson, the applicant, this is Jose Jaime Cano.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject properties are located on the north side and south side of West Hanson Street, west of F Street, adjacent zoning is general retail district to the northeast and south, and single-family residence district to the west. This is a copy of the subdivision, it's a pretty old subdivision in the area, but lots 12 and 13 of block 3, let me down here. This is already, the owner owns all of these properties, but this is already general retail, as you can see over here. That would be this area up here. And so lots 12 and 13 of block 3 of the Nelson amended subdivision, and lots 11 through 13 of block 2, just 11, but he does also own 9 and 10, same property owner, but he's only requesting 11, 12, and 13 of block 2. The applicant would like to rezone the properties to create a smoother transition from single-family district to general retail. View from the south side of up of Hanson Street. And currently, right now, on lots 11 and 13, there's a residential there right now, and the owner lives at that address. The surrounding land uses include a parking lot for IES, down here, and La Fonda Drive-Thru Restaurant, and single-family residence, along with vacant lots. The development trend is commercial on the west side of F Street, between Tyler Avenue and Fillmore Avenue. The future land use plan shows this area as low-density residential and commercial use. The request is partially consistent with the future land use plan. It does conform with the general retail district commercial development trends. The planning and zoning recommended approval and staff.
Do we know what they're planning to do, or build there, or what kind of business?
He's trying to expand the taco business that he already has, but this will residential and possibly for additional parking, and I mean, he's just looking at the future. He hasn't brought a plan, like a plan for us now. He's going through the zoning process first. On the residential side, he did mention that he does not plan to remove the house, he's just trying to be consistent with the zoning, so that the portion of it is general retail, but the house is to remain, and is currently occupied by them.
And part of it is used for the restaurant parking, is that the?
Right.
And he owns that restaurant, so we're not taking the parking away from that?
Correct, sir. Correct. He's just expanding on the use that's already there, and he's, I guess, good housekeeping, trying to maintain it generally to in the area.
And there were no complaints or concerns from the neighbors?
No, good news.
Okay, let's go to item A, which is public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. We'll go to item B, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone from single-family residence R1 district to general retail GR district for the above described property. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from single-family residential R1 district to general retail GR district for lots 11 through 13, blocks 2, and lots 12 and 13, block 3, RW Wilson amended subdivision, located at 703 and 706 West Hanson, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. All right, thank you, Rodrigo. Item, well, is consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute the landscape maintenance agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for the landscaping elements for the widening of Spur 54.
Given the mayor commissioners, this landscape maintenance agreement is for Spur 54 from Interstate 2 to I-69C. When we went, when we got the AFA for the widening of Spur 54, landscaping pavers were not included as part of the package. Texas normally puts concrete in the median and then move forward. Since then, we wanted a landscaping, pavers, irrigation systems, so on and so forth. So that's what this agreement is for. Pretty much what it says is that they're going to pay for it, install it, and then we just maintain it from here on out. We recommend approval.
All right. Anybody have any questions? And is there a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with Texas?
Some move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. 13, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one to the interlocal agreement between Lower Grand Valley Development Council and the city of Harlingen for the Federal Transit Administration 5307 project of sidewalk improvements and submit a letter of local funding match.
Yes, this item is for additional funding for the sidewalk project. We currently finished the project, all sidewalks are completed in place, except for the railroad crossing on 6 and Jefferson. So when I reached out to Mr. Tom Logan to see if there was any additional funding, so we can plank it and be able to cross the sidewalk, he looked, and he said there's funding available, and this is what the amendment is for, is to add the additional $75,012. Also, in looking at the agreement, I discovered that the agreement expired on September 30 of 2017, so we are requesting an extension from September 30 of 2017 to December 31 of 2019, so we can finish the crossing. We recommend approval.
Is that enough time to get the railroad onboard?
It all depends. A parliamentary attorney will say no, but at that time, we can extend it again.
We are hopeful.
I'll try my best.
And we're having, we're putting ADA ramps right at the end of the curbs?
Yes.
On these sidewalks? Okay, good.
Motion for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, and second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 14, consideration of possible action to accept or reject bids and award a contract for the 2018-19 street improvements project under bid number 201902, and to allow for a quantity adjustment to bring the project within budget.
Yes, we received a total of six bids on the February 12 of 2019. The apparent low bidder was Earthworks Enterprise for an amount of $2,94,394.58, which is over our budget. So I went back and we looked at the plans, and they wanted to reduce any streets or remove any streets from the project. We minimized the curb and gutter, and we removed the hydro moles, and that got us into our budget of 1.862, 827.08. I have spoken with the contractor, he's a worker, and he's okay with it. He's here in the audience, too.
Is this the contractor that's doing our current street improvements?
Yes, sir.
It is?
Except, not the one in Buchanan, it's the other ones.
Have we stayed in budget with those?
Yes.
Haven't been any change orders or?
We've had change orders, decrease, and then we increase a little bit, decrease. Currently, right now, we're about $45,000 under.
Under.
Yes.
So if we're under on the current project, can that be?
We're not finished with the project yet, so we need to wait until we finish the project.
But I mean, if that happens, would we be able to utilize those funds?
Absolutely.
Okay. Absolutely. I'm just asking if they're not frozen?
No.
They are like?
We could carry them over or utilize them.
Thank you.
Do you have a timeframe on completion?
Yes, sir. If approved tonight, my goal is to execute contracts by mid-March, pre-construction, start construction April 1, more or less, and I've got six months to finish, we put some in September.
Is Buchanan the last project that they're working on for this year, for last year, rather? rather?
Buchanan is through CDBG, it's a different contractor.
That's a different contractor.
Different contractor, yes.
This contractor is, the contractor's working on, on M Street, right?
Yes, the M Street, Thirteenth Street, Altus Palmas, Beckham, Garrett.
They've done a good job.
Yeah.
And they are done at this point with the other projects?
They've got one more street left, which is Altus Palmas, and they should be completed by the end of the month.
Have they started in Altus Palmas?
Uh, yes.
They have started?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, the motion is to approve the staff's recommendation to accept the bid by two GS DGA Works our prize, and to allow the quantity adjustment, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion is second, all, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries.
You got the hard one.
Yeah.
Consideration of possible action to authorize city manager to enter into an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for maintenance of the landscaped areas along US seventy-seven eighty-three interchange, expressway seventy-seven at Spur fifty-four.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, this advance funding agreement has been around for a while, and we do it every two years, and this covers Spur fifty-four, the interchange, and all along the expressway. And basically, what they do for us is they move, they, they do the oversight, and they take care of some of the landscaping on interchange. The cost for it is ninety thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-six per year, and it's for two years, and staff recommend approval.
I do have a question, on the interchange in front of Walmart, this year, the Make a Difference Day, planted vegetation along that. Is that going to affect any of the maintenance in any way?
No, no, they just, they pretty much do litter pickup, and then they'll work around what we have existing.
Okay.
This, okay, we have a, we have a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into the advanced funding agreement. Is there a second?
There's a second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. This is, you know, this is, if we didn't do this, we'd have a real mess out there along the interchange, and so it's really important for us to have, you know, to, and this, and this afternoon, the city manager and the assistant city manager and I were, got to see a presentation by Texas Dot about all the various processes that you have to go through to get funding from Texas Dot. They're going to post that on the Texas Dot website, on the NPO website as well, but just to get an advanced funding agreement is a, you know, six or seven-month process, just according to, and just a bureaucratic process that you have to go through. So, you know, these things are, get done, we shouldn't take them for granted, because they take a lot of staff time to get these things done, and so I wanted, Rick was there, he saw that presentation, so anyway, congratulations, thank you for getting this done.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, item sixteen is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen. Motion for?
Do we vote?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, city manager.
Do we, do we vote? They vote?
I have.
Motion is second, but did they vote?
No.
I thought they voted, and then I made my comment, they didn't. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, we did.
Sorry, Mayor.
Plenty of action taken on that one, okay. Now we're going to go to consideration.
Sixteen.
Good evening.
Item sixteen.
This budget amendment allocates a fund for grants and some other expenditures and revenues that are not, that were not previously budgeted in our budget. The, the total amount of revenue increase is two million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-four, and the increase for expenditures is two million, six-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine. Exhibit A, you will see, our total budget has, is now at, for revenue, seventy-eight million, six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-nine, and expenditures at eighty-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-thirteen, one-sixteen. You have exhibit B, and that's all the detail of how we arrived at the total that we were amending. As you'll see, the majority is grants, and we do have some additional revenues, minimal, in the general fund. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, we need to read the, yeah, anything else? Okay, we need to read the caption then.
An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October first, twenty eighteen, through September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Total budget revenues will increase to seventy-eight million, six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-nine, and total budget expenditures will increase to eighty-five million, two-hundred-and-thirteen, one-sixteen, respectively, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution of the Harlingen City Commission amending resolution number twenty-nineteen oh three for the purpose of designating Ben Mylum Elementary School as a polling place located at twelve fifteen Rangerville Road for May nineteen, for the May twenty-nineteen city of Harlingen general election for all registered voters residing in precinct forty-three, District five.
Mayor, this is just the resolution to include Mylum School, the, the school board did vote to designate this place, and since we're doing joint elections, we need to do the same.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, consideration of possible action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Solid Independent School District to share polling places, equipment, and election personnel for Election Day, and share city hall as a joint polling place for early voting by personal appearance.
Mayor, this is a standard contract that we've used in the past, exactly for, for everything that you said, the sharing of polling places, the personnel, equipment, except the programming, they do their own programming on the ballot, we do ours. The only thing that's different in this contract is that the whole harmless clause was removed. In the past, it had been there, but now it's been removed because of the recommendation from legal staff. And then probably we'll have to go back to the school board, so that they can amend the contract to consider that part.
What does that mean?
I didn't hear that part. What does that mean? What changed?
Alice, pick Alice.
Yeah, I can fill you in on this. After the school board had passed, had passed this resolution or this agreement, I took a look at it, and I struck the indemnity and the whole harmless going both ways, because I just, I don't include that, so I recommend leaving that out. If the school board has to take that up again, you know, I, I didn't see it until they had passed it the first time, and that's my recommendation, is to not have that in there.
How does it change? One way or the other?
Well, what it means is that, well, I'd really rather talk to you about that in executive session, but it's a recommendation I have that puts us, I think, both parties in a better position.
Okay.
Do we need to go into executive session if anybody asks a question?
Well, we, we can, when we go to, when we go into executive session, we could take this up, and we could, we could re, we'll just, we'll come back to it.
Okay.
We'll just come back to this item after we go to executive session, we'll, we will include it, so, so, I don't know, yeah, so we'll come back to item eight, we'll come back to item eighteen, we're going to go on to item nineteen now. Board appointments, are there any board appointments?
No.
No.
None.
Okay, I have one, and this is Joanna Lozano to the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, motion carries. All right, item twenty is executive session following, A, pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five, fifty-two point oh seven-two, and five fifty-one point oh seven-one, to deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and if deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city of Harlingen with a third person regarding the acquisition of real property, and pursuant to chapter five fifty-one, sections five fifty-one point oh eight-seven, five fifty-one point oh eight-seven-one, and five fifty-one point oh seven-two of the government code regarding commercial and financial information from a business, from a business prospect with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations, and/or to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives with the business prospect noted as project development, and C, project dream, and to consult with our city attorney regarding item eighteen, regarding the interlocal agreement with the city, between the city and the HCSD. Is there a motion to go into executive session on this item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the city commission's going to meet with the, their attorney regarding some matters, close session, and there, there are no action items that are posted when we come out of executive session. Thank you. We're out of executive session at six forty-five, and we're going to go to item eighteen. Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen and HCSD subject to the city attorney negotiating the final terms?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Any citizen's communication of twenty-one? No citizen's communication. So ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned, thank you.